Well, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We're here at City Hall on May 16, 2017, and the Granbury City Council, along with the Planning and Zoning Commission, joint regular meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Pastor Tim Pixler with Cornerstone Community Church to give the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, or Councilman Mr. Parsons to lead us in that. All rise.
Bow your head for prayer with me, please. Heavenly Father, thank you. Thank you for the great blessing that we have in this wonderful creation, the world that you have made. Lord, I want to thank you for that part of the world called Granbury, Texas. Thank you for a wonderful city. Thank you for your obvious and apparent blessing on this city. Lord, I want to thank you for the good leadership that you've given us. Thank you for just blessing after blessing. Lord, I want to thank you for a city where we're not only allowed to honor you, but encouraged. I want to thank you that you're given preeminence in this city, and I pray that that shall always continue until your coming. I pray, Lord, and also in recognition that we do have issues and things that we have to deal with, things we have to solve, and I pray for your wisdom, for your direction, for every leader, for the mayor and all councilmen and everyone involved and the committees, that you would just give them the wisdom to do the things that should be done. Lord, you have a plan. It's just left for us to walk in it and to know it, so I pray that you would reveal that. Lord, I thank you again for the awesome opportunity, the wonderful country we live in. I'm proud to be an American, Lord, and I thank you, thank you, for placing me here in this great place. Lord, we continue going forward, asking for your favor and your blessing, and we pray it all in the awesome and only saving name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the common good of our people, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now to the state flag of Texas. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. At this time, I'll declare that the Granbury City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission is convened into open session and that all the members are present. The City Council and the Planning and Zoning Commission will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. I think we do have one council member that has accused himself, Mr. Tony Mobley, is that correct? Tony will not be joining us back in the executive session, so at this time, we will go back in the executive session. I think we have a quorum on both sides here, so I'm gonna go ahead and, we're gonna reconvene into open session. There was no action taken back in the executive session. We will now go ahead and move into our deliberation agenda. As you know, folks, the deliberation agenda is going to be a joint agenda with the Planning and Zoning and the Council. At this time, we've got item number one, two, three, and four are all related to the same, and so I'm gonna ask our staff, Scott Sobchek, to go ahead and read in to this item, if you would please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. We have four requests, the first of which is a request to amend the comprehensive plan, more specifically, the map of the future land use plan, figure 4.3. Secondly is a rezoning request to allow for the consideration of an application regarding a plan development, multiple family, and a tie with that to the development plan as submitted to support the rezoning request. Thirdly, we have the TCP tree conservation plan, and fourthly, we have a preliminary plat. I'll go over these very briefly. The subject property is denoted on our map of the future land use plan. It's bordered in a lime green color highlighted with a star. You can see to the west, it's earmarked as medium-density residential through the subject property. To the south and to the east, the red coloring denotes a suggestion of commercial activity, which is also supported with zoning that's currently in place. In your agenda packet, you do have the application of the request to amend the comprehensive plan, the map of the future land use plan, as a part of the submittal package to you. A couple of things that the city staff wants to touch on is what denotes medium-density residential and high-density residential. In essence, medium-density residential is typified by townhomes and patio homes at a density of between six and 10 dwelling units per acre, as denoted on the bottom. High-density residential is something more typical of your apartment complex, up to 18 dwelling units per acre. Of particular note, in this text that's adopted in our comprehensive plan, you'll note, highlighted with an arrow, this land use is primarily used as a buffer between lower-density residential use and the more intense land use such as commercial areas, which is the case that we have here. We have it bordered by medium-density residential, and we have commercial that are actually contiguous to the subject property to the south and to the east. This is a copy of the application submitted by the developer to amend the future land use map. That's broad brushstrokes of the comp plan amendment. I'm gonna transition over to the zoning request. This is an aerial photograph of the subject property. It's currently zoned to interim holding. Again, you can see the plan development, mixed-use townhome and patio home located to the west, and commercial located to the south and east. An aerial of the subject site. This is the development plan that was submitted to support the request to rezone the property to a plan development, multiple family. Particular note, we see the new development plan that we've seen from the previous applicant, roughly six, eight months ago. He's reconfigured the site design, and a couple of things that he's brought forth as amenities or changes to the proposal is a 50-foot berm that's located contiguous to the western property line, and it contains a buffer area as well as a berm that transitions to its select height. Those lines that you see across the berm are cut lines showing the approximate height of it, and we'll get to a cross-section here in a minute. The approximate distance from the western property line to the nearest adjoining building is about 145 foot of open space through the parking and the 50-foot landscape berm area. The three-story apartment buildings are denoted in red. They, in essence, follow the shoreline of Lake Granbury, five, four, three, and two respectfully. The numbered buildings that are in green, one, six, seven, and eight, and nine, the clubhouse, are all two-story buildings. The light blue areas are the parking garages. This shows the transition from the site design over to some of the tabulated variance requests. See if I can get to the list here. The first of which is a front yard setback, is our base requirement of 25. What he's requesting is a 15-front setback, and where that is being placed, if you see the arrow, purple arrow, that goes to two diamonds that are along Hill Boulevard, you can see that those are the two buildings, one of which is a garage, and the second of which is a two-story building along Hill Boulevard. Again, those are denoted with the purple arrows to help you locate those variances. So that's the front setback variance. I'm gonna be switching back and forth, and just bear with me if you would. Side yard setback, 30 foot on the west side due to the height of the proposed building, and 5 foot on the east side, which the standard is 15, again, on the east side adjoining the commercial. He's got the placement of those garages. What he's requesting is to vary the side setback from 15 to 5, to move it over closer to the commercial property. And then he does have a variance request to the three-story building to allow for a little over 15 foot instead of the 30 foot that's required for a greater than one-story apartment building adjoining a single-family district, and it doesn't distinguish between single-family attached or detached, it's just single-family. So that's the placement of the side yard variances. Predominantly, those are on the east side. We have a rear yard setback of 30 feet. What he's requesting is no rear yard setback because of the lake, the rear units are not in the flow plane. And transition back here, you can see that dash line, which is the 100-foot flow plane, which is really the guiding element to where the building footprints are being placed. Based on looking at where that shoreline is and where the flow plane is, that's greater than 30 foot of land mass area typically than the established 30-foot rear yard line. So it's really gonna be, the guidepost there is gonna be really dictated by the flow Building separation from main structure to main structure with openings of up to 20 feet, 10 foot with no openings. What he's requesting is to utilize the adopted building code, and that adopted building code and this particular site plan will dictate building placement if approved. 2.5 spaces per dwelling unit. What he's requesting is 1.72 parking spaces per dwelling unit, and those are compliant spaces. That is, more specifically, either concrete or hot-mix asphaltic concrete. He's also requesting the allowance to use tandem and grasscrete, which gives him a parking accrual of 2.05 spaces, back to the site plan. You can see those grasscrete spaces that are denoted with kind of a grayish shading with a pattern in it. The more solid grayish shading is the carports, the grasscrete area's got the hatching in it. And what we've done is we've kinda looked at probably about eight to 10 model ordinances from other cities, just to see where we stand with respect to parking requirements. Our zoning ordinance requires 2.5 spaces per dwelling unit. It does not distinguish between one bedroom, two bedrooms, or three bedrooms. It just asks for 2.5 spaces per unit. And doing some review of other cities' ordinances, we are finding that ours is a little excessive, comparatively speaking. What we have seen is typically, we see, in essence, 1.5 spaces for one bedroom, two for two bedrooms, and 2.5 for three bedrooms. And this particular development plan, out of the number of units, which I think is about 130, approximately 60 are one bedrooms. So that needs to, that's part of his presentation and underscoring of the variance request. He's still providing close to 2.05 spaces per unit, 1.7 for compliant spaces, and our review of those 10 cities, he is, in essence, at the midpoint of what we've done on our research in comparison. Maximum height is 35 foot, but for roof gables, cooling towers, chimneys, and bent stacks, 40 foot is permitted. Height at the building plate line, this is Don's presentation or the developer's presentation, height at building plate line is 33. Our standard at the plate line is 35, so he's good there. Height at ridge line is 50, midpoint of roof line is 41.5. So what he's asking for insofar as the height variance is actually, once you get above that top plate line toward the peak of the gable, he's a little bit over. All buildings require 80 percent masonry is our standard. He is not asking for a variance or an exception to the masonry standard on the principal buildings where the residents are. He is just asking for a variance on the carports. We've seen this variance at least at ZBA level where they don't want a masonry, the poles in particular, the carports, because they don't want vehicles to strike them. And lastly, the variance, all required parking shall be on an approved part surface, 11 to 87 in section 12, and this is a reiteration of a prior variance to allow for the consideration of grasscrete as calculable parking spaces, bring the total up to 2.5. So you have in your staff report the suggested options insofar as zoning or considering the rezoning request. You can approve as presented. A particular nuance to our zoning ordinance is you have to, you really need to approve the development plan before you approve the adoption ordinance, so that's why you see it fashioned the way you do. If in the event you choose to support the request or support it with modification, city staff is asking you to fall in line with the procedural requirements of the ordinance and approve the development plan first, and then the adoption ordinance establishing the PD District. You can do reasonable design modification, and then third, fourth, and fifth table for additional information, deny with prejudice. Applicant cannot resubmit for six months or deny without prejudice whereby the applicant can resubmit without any cooling period. The third case is the tree conservation plan. We have a submitted plan, in essence, the trees conservation plan proposes to remove three protected trees. There are, I believe, one red oak and two live oaks, and they are looking from the west to the east, 16-inch, 22-inch, and 22-inch trees respectfully. His tree conservation plan has recognized that, and based on the caliber inches, the contribution to the tree fund to actually issue permits and have those trees removed is $7,500. The developer has recognized that on the tree conservation plan. In looking at the vegetation based on the tree survey and how he's laid this out, he's done a very admirable job of positioning his impervious cover, his building footprints, and laying out his open space to minimize the impact on the trees as much as possible, and also laying out and designing the placement of the grasscrete. So this is based on the vegetation that's out there and the number of protected trees. This is a very minimal impact and falls in line with the spirit intent of the tree protection regulations adopted by the city. We do have the note on there that was discussed at the last city council meeting, saying that the Parks Director, who's familiar with tree removal and damaged trees, will, in essence, be out there supervising to make sure any trees that are proposed to be relocated are not damaged in a manner that compromises their health when they're relocated to be planted. If they are, then this note states quite clearly that they're responsible for the cost of the damaged tree because it cannot survive. It also allows for a neutral arborist or horticulturist to go out there and give opinion on the matter to our Parks Director. And that was agreed to be placed, that note was agreed to be placed on the TCP by the applicant, and that was a point of discussion six, eight months ago, that I think P&amp;Z recommended that note be placed on the TCP. This is the summary of the TCP elements, the total number of trees on the site. There you see the number of trees to be removed, there's three, the caliber inches to be mitigated off of those three trees, roughly 60, 7,500 to be paid in the tree fund. And lastly, we have the preliminary plat application. Again, this is the subject property, an aerial of the site, a site with topography. There is one variance that's tied to this. I know we talked, in essence, this is the same preliminary plat that we saw last go around. We have a sewer line that bisects the property. We have one variance to section 3, 9, and 4, 5, I believe, that request to not place a sewer line on Hill Boulevard because it's running internal to the property. Everybody else contiguous to the property, and all the developed properties around this are currently being served by sewer off of this line or through a line along 377. So there's no need in order to button-hook this line down as a public main in order to reroute it, just to get it in front of Hill when this property can be served by the sewer line bisecting the property. You have a memorandum from your engineer stating support of the variance to not reroute the sewer line along Hill Boulevard. That is the only variance that's tied to this preliminary plat application. Hill Boulevard, as we talked last time, is a substandard road insofar as right-of-way, but not roadway template. So the built facility meets the roadway template standard. The right-of-way dedicated does not. It's 56 feet. As such, the applicant typically, when we see these, they have to dedicate half of the difference. He has shown on his preliminary plat that he's willing to dedicate the two feet, which is half of the difference between 56 and 60 feet. Outside of the variance to support the sewer, the plat is ministerial in scope, and again, your engineer recommends approval of the variance request as submitted. To circle back around, it all begins with the comp plan amendment and the rezoning request, so that's my presentation in very broad brushstrokes, Mayor, and I will turn it back over to you. I know the developer has representatives here that may want to speak on behalf of this, so I will defer back to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. Commissioner, I'm gonna go ahead and allow Art Anderson, he has a presentation also, I think, to give in regards to the Murphy property out there.
I appreciate the opportunity to present this case to you today. We represent both the Hill family, which is the owner of the property, as well as Don Murphy, who is the developer and applicant. Scott, is it set up? Or do you want me to? I don't have any more small talk until...
The staff mentioned we've got four items. This is an aerial of the property. As y'all know, it's primarily residential with some commercial fronting the lake, and then on the other side, next to 377, are primarily retail restaurants, other commercial buildings in close proximity. You see there the different types of land uses in the area. So the property today is zoned IH, which is interim holding, so this will be the first permanent zoning on the property. And as staff mentioned, there's the site with the plant. So little history, the plan when it was looked at initially, there was a recommendation for high-density residential by P&amp;Z that was changed to medium-density by the council. There are a number of goals in the comprehensive plan that would be met by approving the comprehensive plan amendment we're requesting. The first one is that one of the main goals of the plan is to try to encourage mixed uses, and that's what this does. And it says a variety of different types of land uses contribute to walkability and vibrancy, which means basically that residents can walk to the restaurant, the bank, things like that, without having to get into their car. And that's basically what we have here, because we have a variety of commercial uses that were within walking distance. So this is the type of mixed-use category that's envisioned by the plan. We have a number of letters of support by the commercial property owners with frontage as well as by some of the restaurants and tenants. They're just listed there. I'm not gonna go into any detail on them, but there's nine letters of support. In addition to that, the comprehensive plan recognizes a need for additional high-density residential, and if you can see, basically, the number of units that's envisioned, is eventually for build-out is 4,100 in the high-density residential category, recognizing that there's going to be an increasing number of renters in the city. And this is from our marketing study that we used for part of the lending to get the loan on the property. In the primary market area, there currently are 705 units with 21 under construction, so that'd be about a sixth or so of what the total number of units envisioned by the plan. In addition, there's a significant amount of high occupancy, multi-family in the area, which indicates that, you know, if you build a project like that, you want to make sure that you have high occupancy and high demand, and that's what you would have in this case. The last item, there's not a slide on it, but as staff mentioned, in terms, one of the other goals besides the others in the comprehensive plan is to have the high-density serve as basically a buffer between lower-density and commercial, which we have in this case. So here's the proposed site plan. The primary difference, and we'll show the previous one that was considered, but the, oh, that is the previous. What happened there? Sorry about that. Okay, so the lower left-hand corner, I guess that would be the southwest, is basically where it showed some of the apartment units being fairly close to, I guess, what the backyards are of some of the Stonegate residents. And so the attempt in this proposed site plan is to try to address that adjacency by moving those buildings back so that there'd be a greater buffer between the townhouse residents and their backyards in the closest multi-family project, and as part of that, there'd be a 50-foot, it's a little bit better close-up there, a 50-foot landscape area, we called it a park area, with a berm that would have both trees and a significant amount of shrubbery on top. So you'd have the berm, 50 feet is about the width, then on top of that, you would have trees, significant amount of shrubs as an additional buffer. This is the type of architecture that's envisioned for the building, trying to make it with the stone, which is the, I think, preferred material. And that's where the landscape berm and buffer area is. So in addition to moving the apartment buildings themselves back, basically, as we'll see, it's about 160 feet from the property line, which is more than half a football field. You'd also have this landscape berm built up to, A, provide, I guess, some sort of natural park look from the back of Stonegate, but would also tend to shield any potential lighting, things like that, if you include the trees and the shrubs on top. So one of the things that was important on this site, as you know, is to keep as many trees as possible. And in this particular slide, the darker brown-green or darker green are gonna be transplanted trees, which is a significant number compared to most projects that I've seen. And then the green trees are those that stay. So for example, on the berm, there are a couple of large trees. For those of y'all that have been out there, you can see them pretty easily. And then the goal was also to include some transplanted trees, and then also to have some shrubs as well. And it looks sort of like that. As you could tell, if you look a little bit up, there's also an extremely large tree right there. right there that was attempted to be saved. All of those trees are important, and that's been a big goal, is to save those. And so when you save these trees, and you have a certain number of units, and you're trying to keep some of the units further away, you also want to have a park that's going to have the Ferrymasters House. And you also, you know, basically want to ensure that the taller buildings are located further away, because you're moving those buildings around, they're kind of like chess pieces. You have to be cognizant of the various different ways that you have to move inside things in order to accomplish all of those goals. That's the reason when we talk about variances, for example, there's some, what I consider to be relatively minor setback variances. That results from the fact that you're trying to move these buildings, to basically move them back from Stonegate, keep the trees, keep the park area. And when you do that, you're going to have to move the building somewhere. And that's the reason for some of those variances. This is the berm. Kind of hard to show that at a cross-section, but that was the intent, the intent is to have more shrubs and trees on the top. But that's basically a 50-foot, which is a significant berm area right there. So the goal in terms of setting back those two, those two closest are going to be two-story units. That would result in the closest unit being 160 feet to the property line and 180 foot to the closest home. So that was the goal, was to try to address that adjacency issue, provide kind of a park-like setting and have a significant setback. So, you know, 180 feet were two-thirds of a football field, pretty close. The previous site plan was 40 feet and 25 feet, just as a comparison. If the property were to be developed under medium-density, this would be a setback that could be achieved. No telling what it would be, but the minimum would be a 20-foot and a two-story unit. And again, the Ferrymasters office is, I guess, if I read it correctly, the oldest building in the county. And so I think the Hill family should be credited for the fact that they're willing to dedicate that as a park feature to the city, because it has an important part of history. The Hill family, as well, has been here, as you know, a long time. That's where it's located today. So here's an example, you know, I think from a variance standpoint, there are two small areas that are going to be using brasscrete. Brasscrete is considered to be a variance. From reading through the council minutes, it looks like most developments in the city receive variances of some type, either during zoning or plating, that sort of thing. And variances in and of themselves aren't bad. I mean, it just depends, why are they being requested? It doesn't make sense for the property. You know, for example, I think Stonegate PD has variances. So I don't think variances in and of themselves are a bad thing. So an example here is the brasscrete. The brasscrete's a variance because it's not pure concrete. Okay, it's got grass that is basically interspersed with the concrete paving blocks. One of the things it does is it helps on drainage, and it also helps when you have trees in the vicinity, because it helps the roots. A lot of times, y'all have seen sidewalks or concrete-built over roots, and you know what happens? If you kill the tree, it buckles. So as you could tell, one of the, where the concrete is, when we go back, sorry, is on the east side. And basically, it's where you have clumps of trees that will enable them to be easier to keep the roots alive and to allow them to grow. I think everybody agrees keeping trees is a good thing. And so the brasscrete is relatively limited into just those two different areas, but we think that from a variance standpoint that that makes sense. So the other one concerns parking, and staff talked about parking. And we kind of looked at a few other cities like Stevenville, Cleveland, and their parking spaces requirements are more like a Burleson 1.75 or 2 to 1. So if you use that, then the 261 would meet that criteria. I think from the standpoint, so again, if we're talking about variances, 2.5 protects the city. Okay? So if apartment developer comes in and has a project with all two- and three-bedroom apartments, as an example, and you've got that standard of 2.5, 2.5 makes sense. Okay? Because that's about how many cars you would likely have with that number. A variance, though, makes sense here because of the number of one-bedrooms that we have. And I think it's more likely that in a one-bedroom, you're going to have one per unit. For the two-bedrooms, keeping it as 2.5, that comes up with 223. The number of spaces being provided is 261. So that's 28 spaces in excess of that. I don't think there's any evidence that I've seen of apartment projects that have been parked at that ratio that have had a problem of not having sufficient parking. But again, in that case, I think the variance makes a lot of sense. There was a traffic impact analysis done that was presented with the last application. The city's consultant said, "We agree with the developer's study that no dedicating improvements were warranted at this time due to the relatively minor impacts of the proposed site." Again, the tree conservation plan, so for the total number of trees, there's 130 and saving 110, which I will tell you for a project like this is amazingly good. It's very, very strong. These are some examples of some of the trees that are going to be saved. I mean, there's some huge trees on the site, as y'all have seen. So that's the tree conservation plan part. In the preliminary plat, the, that's primarily an engineering function. Did want to point out the park dedication, which I understand would have to go through other processes in order to be finalized, but we did want to emphasize again that we're making that offer to the city today. We appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Art. Okay, folks, at this time, what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing up. We're going to open the public hearing up to the commission and to the council on all these four items here. And I have blessed one of the speakers to speak on behalf of multiple people. We try to keep them to three minutes, but at this one here, we're going to go ahead and allow a little over five minutes to speak on this one here. Rest of them, try to keep your comments to three minutes when I call your name. So I'm going to call you up here, and you'll be addressing this to the P&amp;Z commission and the council. Our first speaker is going to be Eve Bean. Is that right, Bean? Bean? And she will be talking on behalf of multiple people from the Stonegate community, and she will be giving the presentation and taking up over five minutes. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We truly thank you for your time and for your service to this city. My name is Eve Bean, and my husband and I live at 1017 West Avalon Court in the Stonegate community. As the mayor said, I am speaking tonight on behalf of property owners in the Stonegate community. There are 37 townhomes in that facility. We feel like here we go again. And I know the city council and the P&amp;Z feels probably the same way. But after reviewing Mr. Murphy's most recent plan, Stonegate homeowners believe we are back to square one. We are certainly and were expecting something totally different than the plan that was presented, especially since that is what the city requested of Mr. Murphy, something different. This plan presents many issues. There are many variances. Some are stated in the plan and some are not, which helps explain, we feel, why Mr. Murphy has requested planned development multifamily, a PDMF zoning. PDMF zoning allows Mr. Murphy to bypass going before the ZBA for approval of his many variances. PDMF zoning allows him to build three-story buildings with disregard for height restrictions, building separation, building setbacks, among other things. This plan includes six three-story buildings. PDMF zoning does not require him to provide sufficient parking for anyone, residents, relatives, visiting friends, deliveries. City ordinance, as you know, requires 2.5 parking spaces per apartment, and this plan provides 1.72 compliant spaces. As pointed out on the development plan, Mr. Murphy's architect says that the provided parking is not sufficient. Even adding non-compliant parking tandem in brasscrete spaces, the provided parking is still insufficient. A new addition to Mr. Murphy's plan is a berm along the western border that is shown to be five feet high in the middle, then sloping down on each end. Mr. Murphy refers to this berm in his application as being six feet high, so we're unsure which that is. This developer must be hoping this berm will serve as a privacy fence. In addition, this berm, along with one of the three-story buildings, is shown on the plans to be directly on top of the drainage and utility easement. Stonegate homeowners are totally in shock on that one. The previous privacy fence between Stonegate and the Hill property was removed from the plans. It is unheard of that a quality development doesn't have a fence constructed to protect its neighbors. A request to alter the 2016 comprehensive plan appears to us to be self-serving. Our city has invested time and money to require a roadmap, an outline of sorts for Granbury's future development. The Fries and Nichols recommendation for the Marcus Smith tract remains mid-level density. Changing the density to high level is clearly out of character with this neighborhood. Mr. Murphy refers to his proposed development as being medium-density on his application. But who are we trying to kid here? Apartments are not medium-density. One of the requests is regarding the preliminary plat, requesting to amend it. We're confused by that because we don't believe the preliminary, we don't believe the preliminary plat was ever approved by city council following the P&amp;Z approval in 2016. How can you amend a plat that was not approved by council? In closing, I would like to take a page, specifically page three, from the lawsuit filed by the Dallas firm representing Mr. Murphy and Mr. Hill. There is a statement taken from item five, Roman numeral four, which oddly enough is subtitled "Facts." It reads, quote, "The land was intended to be used in a second phase of townhome development." Townhome development. The zoning recommendation from Fries and Nichols indicates that they agree. The majority of Stonegate residents wholeheartedly embrace development of this tract of land. But we need a compatible development that is mid-level density. It is extremely difficult for our community to understand why the city, both the Planning and Zoning Board and the elected city council, would not do what is right and enforce city ordinances. We are certain there are many ideal locations for apartments in the city of Granbury in Hood County. However, the infrastructure for the Marcus Smith tract is not conducive for that type of high-density development. It is our hope and prayer that you will vote here today in good conscience. We respectfully request that you deny all four points, including Mr. Murphy's request this evening. Thank you so much in advance for your support.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Mr. Rick Frye. He will be speaking on item one through four. Rick, you in the house? I saw him leave a while ago. Well, maybe he'll return. Let's go, let's move on to Mr. Robert Hill. He'll be speaking on item one through four.
Planning and zoning members, council members, mayor, city manager, my name is Robert Hill. I represent the owners of 717 Hill Boulevard. I respectfully ask approval of our request contained in the joint planning and zoning city council agenda tonight. The apartment project planned for this site will benefit all Granbury citizens. Brazos Crossing will complete a 52-acre master plan by adding much-needed residential space to a predominant commercial area, provide additional multifamily housing in a market without enough rental units to serve the increasing demand, create jobs, deliver 10 times more tax revenue than its current designation, maintain the beauty of the site by preserving the bulk of the 100-year-old oak and pecan trees, contribute a new city park featuring the historic 150-year-old Ferrymasters Cabin. Now, in spite of these attributes, I know some do not like multifamily housing. Since my time is limited, I'll address one of the complaints. Multifamily development lowers home values. That's an opinion simply not supported by the facts. A recent George Mason University study shows that overall multifamily developments have positive impacts on the surrounding neighborhoods, with relatively strong home price appreciation and even lower crime levels. Moreover, having a sufficient supply of housing for the workforce is essential to Granbury's economic vitality. We have a relatively strong economy with healthy job growth and comparatively low unemployment. Housing costs have increased at a much, at much faster rates than income over the last decade. That's made housing increasingly less affordable to Granbury's workforce. In fact, home prices could rise another 10% this year, according to Jim Gaines, who is the chief economist at the Texas A&amp;M Real Estate Center. With apartment occupancy rates hovering around 100%, it's difficult for people who get jobs in Granbury to actually live in Granbury. And without a dynamic workforce, future businesses may not locate here. Multifamily housing is good for the community and the economy, and that's why we have the support of job creators like Dairy Queen, Chili's, Proms, claims restaurant, Walgreens, Chicken Express, Granbury Family Med Clinic, Avalon Town Center, and many, many others. Brazos Crossing is a win for people who want to work here and live here. And it's a big win for Granbury taxpayers, Granbury Parks and Recreation, and the citizens of Hood County. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Frye come back in, or he had to leave? Okay. We'll put that one off the side. Is there anybody else in the public that wishes to speak on this item? If not, I'll close the public hearing. I'll turn to the commissioner, Commissioner Daniels. Does Commissioner got any questions or concerns to Mr. Scott, Scott check, or Mr.? Thank you. Counsel, do you have any concerns, questions for Scott or Mr. Anderson?
Paul, a primary, one of the primary concerns, after reading the note...
Well, she didn't have it.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, make sure he's plugged right into that mic, so she can hear you. Okay.
Is the wall one of the primary concerns for the neighborhood?
Can I have you go to the mic there? Because it's hard to get her to record it, our secretary, if we don't speak into the mic.
Okay.
Thank you.
The way it appeared to us on the development plan that was submitted, it appeared that there was no room at all between the berm and the four-foot wrought iron fence that's right on...
right on the back of each of the 13 eastern homeowners. And it also appears that the three-story building that fronts the lake is like no more than 15 feet from the townhome owner in Stonegate that has her unit right there. So, yes, the wall changing to a berm was a big concern, among others.
Houseperson Myers.
I have a question. Could Chris address the concern regarding the easement that runs along the berm?
Scott, do you have any information on that detail?
Which easement? Would that be an infrastructure easement?
They mentioned that the berm sits right on the utility easement along that property line.
I think when they talked about building that on top of the tract.
So, based on last discussions when P&amp;Z and council deliberated on this, it was recognized that there is a century sewer, two possible easements. Century sewer manhole that's actually located on the common property line. The line actually traverses east-west through the property and then goes north along the property line and then back east or west through the Stonegate community. Okay. Okay, hang on one second. And then the other easement that's depicted on the plat is a, I believe there's a AT&amp;T easement along the property line.
I think there's United Co-op.
United Co-op, okay. Maybe a transformer that's actually shown out there. And DRC is aware of that, and typically those get relocated as part of the development And the other thing, between the preliminary and the final plat, those infrastructure elements, like the sewer and the water line, will get tied down, located when the developer's engineer and our engineer will submit and review the engineering plans.
Additionally, on the drainage related to that berm, I've been informed that they were going to put underground storm drainage to address the drainage from that, so it would be adequate. But that goes through the next phase of the plat.
And Scott, how tall is the berm? Five or six feet?
The plat will, I mean, the berm is intended to be five feet at the highest point, and there's those cross-section lines on that that look like lot lines on that preliminary plat or that development plat, and those are actually cross-sections that show the elevation at different places. As it goes back towards that sewer main, it goes down a little bit back that way, where it's not five foot.
I saw that, yeah. But they are building a stone wall beyond the berm, right? It looks like here, number eight on the plat shows a six-foot-high stone wall. What is that? It says new six-inch, six-foot-high stone wall that goes from the berm down to the lake, past the apartments on that end. Is that right? Number eight under keynotes on the...
You're right, it is from the back end of the berm.
Down to the...
To the water, but not from the start of the berm.
Right. But the berm, of course, I wasn't on planning zoning last time this was on here, so that's why I have some questions about the wall and the berm. So, the berm is 50 feet wide and same height that the wall is in the middle, it'll be the same height as the wall would have been.
Use your mic, Scott.
But it's 50 foot wide, which before, as I understand it, the apartment complexes were much closer to the backyards.
Yes, sir, they were 40 foot.
So, this landscaped berm probably is, you know, I don't have preference one way or another, but I really think it will provide more screening with heavy landscaping on it. Is that what they have there, heavy landscaping on that berm? I think that's what you said a while ago.
Sir?
Yep.
One of the big issues about the berm is that it sits on the drainage easement. So, what's going to happen when we have some heavy rains? That water is going to come right off the berm and directly into the patios unless something else is done.
I think the city manager, didn't you just say it's going to be underground drainage?
Yes, it's required under our code to be underground when they design it. And they assured me that they will do that.
And that will be addressed in the final?
Right.
Yes, sir.
I've got a question, Mayor, the young, the lady up here. If you put the wall up, would that be on top of it then or not?
Pardon me, if you put the wall up, would that be what?
Would it be on top of the storage drainage?
No.
No. Okay.
That original plan for that six-foot wall, the stone wall, was to be behind the property line of the eastern homeowners, but it was not on the drainage easement. There was a, there was an easement that was given so that landscapers and emergency egress and, you know, to be able to get out of that area, out of their backyards. And that was, that's not in there either. That's why the concerns, it's concerning the homeowners on the eastern side about how they're going to handle even getting out if they had to leave through their back because of fire or whatever, if they had to try to get out through their back yards.
I know several said that after it was approved that they didn't like it, you know? They didn't want a wrought wall in their backyard. So, to me, a berm is more...
I don't think I recall, I'm sorry, anyone saying that.
Well, you don't answer my phone, but that's okay.
Okay. No, I don't, sir.
Beg your pardon?
I said, no, I don't.
Okay. So, what I'm saying is, I kind of agree with Mr. Sullivan that, Southern, that a berm may, landscape may be more prettier for you. I guarantee you, it's probably more money than a fence to build. And the landscape, it might be more attractive to you and your neighbors.
Well, I hear what you're saying, sir, but I can tell you that I speak for the majority of the residents in my community, and they do not want a berm. They are not happy with that choice at all.
And they're happy with a fence?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, if you're speaking on behalf of them, what do they recommend? What are they saying that they want?
We would love to have a townhome development to start with. So, if you're asking me what I want, let me just tell you, and all of my neighbors do too. So, since you ask, but what...
Are they going to fit the bill? Do they want to fit the bill?
This is not our development, sir.
Exactly.
Of course not.
Exactly.
But you asked me what we wanted, so I'm trying to tell you.
You know, you want something, but you're not willing to do or go half with the developer in trying to accommodate both sides. That's how I feel about it.
That has never been a discussion item even brought up or on the table.
I think Mr. Allen asked.
Okay, counsel, is there any more questions? You got something up here? Okay.
I think Mr. Allen asked if the choice were given, if y'all had a choice, would the berm be more attractive to you or would the fence be more attractive to you if you had to choose one of those two?
I would, I would have to defer to the 13 people who face that side. My townhome does not face the eastern side, so I would not want to make any kind of final decision for them. But several of them are here. I can certainly poll them if the council would like to know.
I thought she was speaking for him. I'm sorry, Mr. Scott.
Well, sir, you're, the question is being posed like it's a final. So, okay, how many of the eastern homeowners who are here would prefer to have a wall instead of a berm?
Mayor, I don't go for this. This is not, not them voting, it's us up here in the...
Commissioner's got the floor right now, Mr. Allen.
Okay.
The commissioner's got the floor right now.
Well, I'm sorry to have confused the issue, sir, but as I said previously, what is preferred is the stone wall.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner, do you have any more questions or concerns for Scott or Mr. Anderson?
I just want to, I want to ask the representative for the apartments, what was the decision to put a berm there? Why was that decision made to put a berm there?
The decision was, and maybe we're wrong, but was, we thought that that was a better treatment in terms of more natural park-looking, where people could look out their backyards, see landscaping trees, and we moved the buildings way back. We thought that that would be a more attractive treatment than having a wall right there in the backyard. That was the thinking. We may be wrong, but that was, you know, that, it wasn't, it was put in specifically because we thought that that would be a better buffer and a better treatment for folks that are looking out their back doors.
Have y'all had the chance to meet with some of the townhome owners to ask their opinion about that?
I have, I have not, no.
I have no further questions.
I guess I have another question. Don't all the 13 homes along there have fences already? You do have fences. I drove out there and looked in the backyard. So, you're going to have that fence and then, which of course you could change if you wanted, I suppose you could make it taller if you wanted to. But this berm, the thing that, and I live downtown, so let me tell you why this is an issue to me, noise. This buffer will do a lot more to mitigate any noise coming from up there than if you have a fence with parking right up against it, which was in the original plan, I understand. And a berm of this type, we put it around the sewer plant several years ago, and it does a lot to mitigate the look of the sewer plant, but it also does the noise buffering. So, that's kind of what, if I lived there, I'd prefer, since I already have a fence, to have a buffer like that. But that's just me, so, but that's what I was, that's why I asked.
More questions?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Counsel? Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns for Scott or Anderson?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Parsons.
On the masonry requirement, there are garages involved. The garages will be masonry, right? Or, and it's just carports that are only...
Masonry garages.
Yes, sir, the garages will be masonry.
Okay, because they're connected to the building. And then we need to solve the problem about five foot or six foot in the berm, the application for six foot.
Five foot. Five foot. Five foot with shrubs and trees on the crest.
Shrubs and trees. Understanding that this room is approximately 30 feet wide. We're talking about a 50-foot berm. We're not talking about a little bitty hump. We're talking about a huge area, right?
Yes.
I mean, there's, I think there's 15 tiles basically across here, which makes this 30 feet. So, this room's 30, 35 feet wide. 50 feet wide would be another half again. So, that's going to be a fairly substantial landscaping product when it's built. That's all the questions I have, Mayor.
Counsel, any more questions for Scott or representatives? Counsel and Commissioner, at this time, if there's anybody that would like to break again and consult with attorneys, they may do so. If not, we'll move on. Okay, we'll move on.
I would like to...
Okay. At this, at this time, we'll go ahead and break for executive session. All people are present, and we will take, we will go back into executive session to consult with our attorneys.
Make sure you're here when you vote.
They go first anyway. Well, the Planning and Zoning Commission and the council has reconvened into open session. There was no action taken back in executive session. At this time, just for the audience's sakes, we'll go through each item, and we'll start with the planning and zoning on each item, and then the council will do that item also, and then we'll move on to the next one. So, at this time, we'll go into the item number one with the planning and zoning. Commissioner?
Item number one, amend the comprehensive plan to allow for high-density occupancy as opposed for plans recommended medium density. We have a...
I'll make a motion that we approve the comprehensive plan change from medium density to high density.
We have a motion, we have a second. Second, all favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor?
Counsel? At this time, we will consider approving ordinance 1732 regarding the request of Don Murphy to amend the 2016 comprehensive plan for the approximate 7.94 acre tract of land obtained with the Marcus Smith survey. Counsel, do you have any comments or concerns on this item?
Mayor?
Councilman Couch?
I'd like to clarify the situation. I recused last time on this, on this matter, and I wanted to clarify a couple of things. At the time, I believed I had a financial conflict, given a competing development that I have, and after further legal counsel and research, I do not have a financial conflict. So, that's why I'll be voting tonight.
Thank you, Councilman. Thanks for clearing that up. Counsel, any more discussion on item number one? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move. Second.
What's your motion, Councilman?
The plan development, multifamily.
Okay, we have, we have a motion to amend the map of the future land use plan contained with the 2016 comprehensive plan to allow for the high-density residential development instead of the medium-density residential development on the approximate 7.94 acre tract land contained in the Marcus Smith survey. We have a motion by Councilman Parsons and a second, not a second, by Councilman Allen. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Nay.
We have three ayes and one nay. That is approved. Commissioner, item number two.
Rezone from interim holding to planned development, multifamily. Discussion. We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. All favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor?
Thank you, Commissioner. Counsel? We have item number two, is to consider request of Don Murphy to approve development plan supporting the planned development district and also approve the ordinance 1733 establishing the planned development district for the approximate 7.94 acre tract of the Marcus Smith survey. Any discussion on this item, Counsel? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move, Mayor.
I have a motion to approve by Councilman Allen. I have a second.
Second.
I have a second, but Councilman Parsons? Any more discussion on this item, Counsel? Councilman Parsons, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers, how do you vote?
Nay.
Three ayes, one nay. That is approved. Commissioner, item number three.
Commute free concentration plan, removal and mitigation, takes free. We have a motion. We have a motion to approve. Second, we have a second, all favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor?
Go ahead and move right on down to item number four. We don't have that one.
Item four, amend the preliminary plat. We have a motion. We have a motion to approve. We have a second?
Second.
We have a second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Mayor?
Thank you, Commissioner. Council, item number four, we're gonna consider approving a request of Don Murphy regarding the preliminary plan for approximately seven point nine-four acre tract of the Marcus Smith survey. Do you have any discussion on this item, Council? If not, I'll entertain a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion to approve this preliminary plan as stated. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is that Mr. Allen? I got a second by Councilman Allen. Council, any more discussion on this item? Councilman Parsons, how you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Allen, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilman Couch, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilperson Myers?
Nay.
Three ayes, one nay. That is approved. Meeting for the planning and zoning has been adjourned. Council, do you have any more discussion? If no more discussion, the city council, the joint meeting with the council and the P and Z will be adjourned. We will take a short ten-minute recess and reconvene here for the regular council meeting. Council, we're here at City Hall, May sixteenth, two thousand seventeen, it's eight-thirty. I'll now call the regular city council meeting to order. We're gonna move right on into the consent agenda. Those items being, number one, consider approving city council meeting minutes of May the second, two thousand seventeen, regular meeting. Item number two is to consider approving the purchase of a SS-125 DC-100 CFM melter crack seal machine from Craft Co. in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-two cents. And item number three is to consider approving the purchase of the Toro Series five thousand propane mower from Merlison Outdoor Power Equipment LLC in the amount of ten thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars and thirty-four cents. This is utilizing the funds provided by the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality, Ryder Seven Air Quality Plant Grant Program, which is our Clean Air Coalition, and prove the donation and send the mower to the city of Tolu, Texas, as recommended by the Hood County Clean Air Coalition Board. And item number four, to consider adopting ordinance seventeen dash thirty-four, amending the general fund budget for the use of the public education and government, which is the PEG funds for the fiscal year two thousand sixteen to two thousand seventeen. And finally, item number five is to consider awarding the bid for the underground construction and maintenance contract for InfraTech Corporation. The bid amount is on base on unit prices. So Council, you've had an opportunity to look over the consent agenda and all those items. Is there any item you'd like to pull off the consent agenda or discuss at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on this propane mower. Will we collect our money from TCQ before we buy that?
It doesn't even go...it doesn't even go through them. The money is already appropriated through the Clean Air Coalition, and actually, the city of Tolu went and purchased a used one because they have to turn one in that is a gas mower and have to destroy it so that they get this other mower, and they've already done that. They're just waiting for us to approve them, to hand that over.
Sorry, I asked.
Yeah.
Funds are already in the bank. TCQ funds are already in the bank.
Yeah, it's already in the bank.
Where are we getting the money from, like the sixty-eight thousand?
It's budgeted.
Budgeted.
It's a budgeted.
It's street maintenance, budgeted, and because it's over fifty thousand, it's on your agenda.
I bet there's no more questions for me, right? No. Any more questions or concerns on the consent agenda, Council? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion on the consent agenda, Council? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? The consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move into the deliberation agenda. Item number six is to consider adopting resolution seventeen ten, approving the change in the Atmos Energy Corporation. I'm gonna call upon our city manager, Chris Coffin, to talk a little bit about that one.
He bet. In your packet is the resolution. As you're familiar by now, every year Atmos provides a rate case. This year, they were asking for fifty-seven million dollars, and the mid-Texas cities of Texas includes us, get together, we hire an attorney, same attorney represents us every year, and we go through an audit. We hire two professional audit firms to review their requests for settlement, and we try to come up with a settlement lower than what they asked for. The auditor said that they justified a thirty-two million to a thirty-seven million dollar increase. The other part, there's three sections in Texas that are broken up. The West Texas group don't go through this process, they've chosen another process where they just sit back and accept what's handed to them for a period of time as increases. The East Texas group accepted an amended amount of forty-eight million dollars for the rate payers to have to pay, and so that was kinda pushed upon us and recommended by Atmos. Now, this is the last year that the ATM, Atmos, Texas Utilities, Municipalities Rate Review Mechanism will be utilized, and we need to renegotiate that for future, but for now, the consortium of cities have agreed on the forty-eight million dollar increase. The resolution's in your packet, and staff recommends the approval of that. The downside to not approving that is we would be taking on a hundred percent of the cost to appeal with the Railroad Commission, which would run into the millions of dollars, and our fifteen hundred gas meters in town shouldn't bear that price all by themselves. We're a small player in a big pond.
Thank you, Chris. Council, do you have any questions or discussion on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the adoption of resolution seventeen ten.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch? Any more discussion, Council? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? That is approved. Thank you, Chris. Our next item is consider authorizing the city managers to advise for the request of qualifications to hire a consultant to review all the city's development-related codes and policies, and to provide suggested updates and amendments that will encourage economic development and maintain historic preservation and safety within our city limits. Chris, can you talk a little more about that for us, please?
He bet. As you recall in previous meeting, I talked about the S U Ps and the development codes that we have tend to make it very difficult to attract economic development. I'm in the middle of one right now that wants to create fifty-five jobs, and our code is not clear enough probably to address that. And also, we need to look at different things that have been adopted through the years. I believe our zoning ordinance began in two thousand one, and we need a good outside view, and I've talked with Scott about this, and it would be better to bring in a fresh set of eyes of a consultant with the knowledge of all these skills and have them make recommendations to us than for staff to come up with these individually, and I think it would add validity to it to have an outside person do that. I have no idea what it would cost, and that's why we needed to just advertise and get some qualifications of some folks and then negotiate with them and see what a fee like that might look like and then bring back to you at a later date.
Very good. What kinda timeline you think it would take if, say, everything went pretty smooth and you got a consultant and started in on it and...
I would think that we would probably need to allow, once we get a consultant on board, about six months. Because there's a lot of codes to review, and, you know, there needs to be some vetting through the P and Z and through the council, and so it takes some meeting dates, but, you know, at a minimum, probably six months.
Yeah, and we're seeing that a lot where we need something. Council, do you have any questions or concerns to Chris on this item?
We'd be talking about something like the parking...
Yes, sir, that would be part of the parking requirements, the building heights. I mean, the building heights that we have adopted right now, you know, they were pre...they don't match the existing fire codes that we have, you know, and it limits what somebody might want to build because the fire code now allows sprinkler system, provides for sprinkler system, and you don't need to be up on the fifth floor with the fire truck. You got a sprinkler system putting the fire out, but, you know, those kinda things need to be looked at. And we wanna keep the city safe, and we wanna maintain our historic preservation. We don't want development to run over us and change our character, but we do need to be sensitive to the barriers that we're putting up in front of people that are wanting to put their business here. A good example that I think of is if someone was actually a small business wanting to go in and put something in, and they were applying for like an SBA loan through the SBDC Building Facility we have over there that assists people with those things, and they found a location, you know, they're not even gonna be able to qualify for that because if it's something that requires an S U P, it's gotta be renewed every year. There's not a bank in the world that's gonna say, you know what, I'm gonna loan you eighty percent of what you need for your business over a twenty-year period if we don't even know assurances that you're gonna be able to operate in that same location. Those kinda things need to be dealt with and fleshed out and allow staff to deal with it instead of having to, you know, struggle to try to work it through the system and cause like those guys with the Hood County Golf, six months of delay. Nothing wrong with staff doing their job, it's just we need to review the rules that we're charging our staff to do and make sure that's what y'all really want, and outside eyes would be a good look for it.
Chris, do they normally do this with a combination of maybe some staff members, maybe citizens around the community or even council people, or does it usually stand alone?
It's, you know, it wouldn't be...it wouldn't be a bad thing to do some collaboration, but I think working with the individual consultant to figure that out would be the best thing. When we develop the scope of work to actually hire the consultant, we'd probably wanna look at that and discuss with them what their recommendations are. Really, it's a lot of technical reading and review and looking at our community and seeing what we've got and how we need to protect what we've got and how we need to develop what we have. So I guess that's all that has to be determined.
Yeah.
And at this point, we're not spending any money, we're just gonna put a notice and advertise and see what kinda folks are interested in doing this kinda work for us. I've got a couple of firms in mind that do this kinda thing, they're planners, they're from that AICP world, and they think like planners and developers, and I'd like to get somebody with some economic development sense about them, kind of a hybrid type organization, and see what we can come up with.
Very good. Council, any more questions for Chris on this item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve considering the authorization of city manager to advertise for the RFU to do this.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilperson Myers?
Second.
Second by Councilman Couch? Any more discussion on this item, Council? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? That is approved. Chris, look forward to it.
Thank you very much.
This time, we're gonna do a report from the city manager information and operation report. Chris?
Appreciate the time. I know it's late in the hour, and we do need to go into executive session for one other thing, but I just wanted to give you a quick, brief update. On the two disasters that we experienced in two thousand fifteen and two thousand sixteen related to floods, staff has worked really hard, and I say staff, not only the finance department, but the public works department and their staff, and, you know, from the purchasing agent to the guys working, they worked very hard, and we were able to track all their hours and everything. And we have applied for funding assistance and been...we totally received three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars at this point, and we are yet to receive another two hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and seventy-six. So that's what our team has done, and I'm proud of them, and I wanted to recognize them. So you guys have done a great job, and it's important that we continue to get those funds when we can. And of course, they're not here tonight, all the people that are responsible for that, some of them are, but they're mostly working or home with their families, but I just wanted to recognize that. It's huge. And the four million dollar structure that's being put in, the Brookshire Parking Lot is not even being counted in this equation, but that truly is a grant from the federal government that funneled through TexDOT, and they're doing that to an easement that we acquired. So it's not ours, but because of our staff, we were able to get some funding for it. So unnoticed, soft, very good things that are happening to us that are behind the scenes. And while I'm talking about grant funding, I'll skip down to number four on my report. There might be an opportunity coming up for some storm drainage improvements that we can do to our canal, our little, whatever you call it, the creek where the erosion was so bad from the storm. And also, I'd like to have them look over there at the other one behind Miyakas, but there may be some grant funding available, and I'm chasing after that as well. So that's some good news, maybe we'll find out how to apply for some of that. I wanted to give you a quick update on the water treatment plant. They've brought in additional crews, they're doing a lot of work, and they're working hard to meet that deadline of October first to have water for us. And the streetscape project, the section they're on right now, they will be completed by the end of the month, and then they'll move to Phase Three, which is Pearl Street, and finishing up Houston. And then the Phase Four is that final intersection there at Pearl and Crockett. So I did meet with the parade folks for the Fourth of July today, and they're gonna be able to work with us to allow the parade to go ahead and go down Pearl Street and turn on Crockett and then go like they usually do. But they'll just do it for that one day, and we'll keep the pedestrians from being there where all that construction is, but at least the traffic can flow that way for the parade. So that seemed to make a lot of people happy. So that's all I've got on reports, and just deal with you in executive session if you could.
Thank you, Chris. It's always good to hear this report, and it's pretty positive, it keeps everybody informed on what's going on in the city, and we do have a lot of things going on. This time now, I'll declare that the Granbury City Council has convened into open session, and all members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following section, section five-five-one point oh-seven-two, deliberation of ground priority real property, and section five-five-one point oh-seven-four, personnel matters.
Thank you.
We got them all here. The council has reconvened into open session, there was no action taken in executive session. Council, do you have any more discussion? If no more discussion, the council meeting is adjourned.